Good afternoon, Dr. Richards. How do we sound from the boardroom?
Perfectly. I can hear you perfectly. Unfortunately, I have the Margie problem with barking dogs.
Looks like everybody that's here is here going to be here, correct? Is that correct? Okay. Okay. Well, we've got enough of us, so let's get going here out of respect for everybody. It is September fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two, regular meeting and special meeting Yosemite Community College District Board of Trustees is hereby called to order at two thirty PM. This governing board meeting is connected to AB three sixty-one and YCCD resolution number two-two dash two-three point zero-four. Good afternoon, everyone. We thank you for your patience as we continue to navigate this virtual platform and Zoom in-person format. We welcome the board members and others who are participating via Zoom. Please be advised that everyone participating via Zoom video or call has been muted with the exception of board members, student trustee, and chancellor. We also welcome any members of our district community and the members of the public who are viewing the meeting live via YouTube. Members of the public are welcome to record this meeting using their own personal devices. The district will also make the recording available on the YCCD YouTube channel for thirty days in accordance to our board policy two-three-six-five recording. As a reminder, board members are asked to use the quote raised hand end quote feature via Zoom when they wish to speak. Everyone is encouraged to mute their audio when not speaking to minimize disruption. The board is open to receiving public comments. A published agenda request of public comments be submitted in advance of the meeting by email. Public comments will be read aloud by staff at the appropriate time during the meeting. Persons seeking to make an in-real-time public comment may do so at the time of the agenda item and are asked to use the quote raised hand end quote Zoom feature. Roll call, please.
For trustees remoting in via Zoom, we'll ask that you confirm that you're present by responding to the three questions. Can you hear me well? Were you able to hear our proceedings on this end until now? And do you have a copy of the agenda for this meeting? Student trustee Maria Marquez?
Present and yes to all three.
Trustee Antonio Aguilar? Vice Chair Baggs is out. Let's see, Hinton is out. Trustee Nicolau? Present. Trustee Richards?
Present and yes to all three.
Trustee Balkan? And board chair Garrett?
Present and yes to all three. Two-point-three statements of conflict. I would ask trustees to declare any conflict or conflicts of interest at this time on any particular agenda item listed on the agenda. For the record, conflicts of interest disclosed will be noted in the official minute. Anyone going once, going twice, okay, you lost it. All right, moving on. Public comments. At this time, I ask the board stenographer to first read aloud any public comments received via email then introduce in-real-time public comment requests. Please note all email correspondence relating to this meeting will become part of the board minute. Board stenographer.
Chair Garrett, there were no public comments received via email, and at this moment, we'll look to see if there's any raised hands in the room. Appears to be none.
No public comments. Move on now. We'll adjourn to closed session. Those items are listed on the posted agenda along with the corresponding government code sections that allow us to meet in closed session on those items. But this time, the board will now adjourn to closed session. Thank you all.
Margie and Darren to rename themselves in their Zoom account. Because Margie's coming up as the board chair from when she had that laptop, the name in that laptop. And he's not coming up as the board chair. So they just need to rename on the app, on Zoom, in the Zoom app on the laptops.
...
Don't let you go there, huh?
Don't let you go to the other, huh?
Chair Garrett, if I just might make a comment. So I know that there are folks coming into the room. So if you would like a public speaker request form, you can go ahead and grab one, find a seat. We just want to make sure that the path and the exit out of the building is free, just in case there's any kind of emergency. Thank you.
I would just reiterate on the free path because by, you know, fire marshal code and everybody's safety, we can't have any of the ingress or egress blocked. So that's for all of us. So the September fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two regular meeting of the Yosemite Community College District Board of Trustees is hereby called to order at five thirty. This governing board meeting is conducted pursuant to A B three sixty-one and Y C C D resolution number two-two dash two-three point zero-four. Good evening, everyone. We thank you for your patience as we continue to navigate this virtual platform. We welcome the board members and others who are participating in person or via Zoom. Please be advised that everyone participating via Zoom video call, video or call has been muted with the exception of the board member, student trustee and chancellor. We also welcome any members of our district community and members of the public who are viewing the meeting live via YouTube. Members of the public are welcome to record this meeting using their own personal devices. The district will also make the recording available on the Y C C D YouTube channel for thirty days in accordance with our board policy two-three-six-five. As a reminder, board members are asked to quote raise their hand and quote via Zoom when they wish to speak. Everyone is encouraged to mute their audio when not speaking to minimize disruption. The board is open to receiving public comments. The published agenda requested that public comments be submitted in advance of the meeting by email. Public comment will be read aloud by staff at the appropriate time during their meeting, persons seeking to make it in real time. Public comment may do so at the time of the agenda item or asked to use the quote raising hand and quote Zoom feature. At this time, I would ask on four-point-two pledgable allegiance, the trustee Antonio Aguilar lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, trustee Aguilar. Four-point-three roll call and establishment of quorum. I now ask that the board tenographer conduct the roll call for attendance, please.
Thank you. For trustees that are attending virtually, if you could please confirm the three questions listed on the agenda, which are, can you hear me well? Were you able to hear our proceedings on this end until now? And do you have a copy of the agenda for the meeting? Student trustee Maria Marquez.
Chair and yes, twelve-three.
Trustee Antonio Aguilar. Vice Chair Leslie Beggs. Trustee Nancy Hinton. Trustee Jenny Nicolau.
Present.
Trustee Milton Richards.
Yes, and I have everything. No conflicts.
Trustee Margie Balkan.
Present.
And board chair Darren Garrett.
Present.
Forum is established.
Thank you. Report out from closed session. In closed session, the board, there's only one item to report out on. In closed session, the board voted unanimously to approve a settlement agreement with the Yosemite Faculty Association, Y F A, to settle perb case L A dash C E dash six-seven-zero-four. And that's the only thing we have to close out. Report out from closed session. Change in order of business. The board reserves the right to modify the order of business in a manner that deems appropriate by consent of the board. At this time, I ask trustees, is there any interest in changing the order of business? Anything online, raising hands? No, okay. So approval minutes, four-point-six. Approval minutes of the August tenth, two thousand twenty-two board of trustees study session. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion made by trustee Margie Balkan. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Jenny Nicolau. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Chair Garrett, I just, you mentioned study session because that's what I wrote in your script, but it is a regular meeting.
Okay, so with that correction, any further discussion, comments, questions? Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Aguilar. Trustee Beggs. Trustee Balkan.
Yes.
Trustee Hinton. Trustee Richards.
Yes.
Nicolau.
Yes.
And Chair Garrett.
Yes.
That is seven-zero, motion carries.
All right, so four-point-seven, public comment. So before we move on to public comment, because we a lot, a lot of folks here. So if you could mute your devices would be helpful. I need, there's, there's still seats up here up front. If you want to have a seat in the boardroom. There's some other miscellaneous seats available. Or if I can get people to go into the overflow room, which is the employee break room. I really need to have this opened up. And so we can get as many people in here as possible and as much participation as possible. So I'll give a few moments for, for folks to, to find a seat and, and join their fellow Y C C D employees and, and a heartfelt discussion here. There are a couple, those end seats right there, we had some people that were there already, so I think they got their stuff there, they may be coming back. So out of respect for that couple, keep those two seats available. Thank you for doing that. Good idea. Can we get, let's see, how many more? We got one there. Anybody else want to take a seat here in the, in the dais? Or do you want to go in the overflow? We're good? Okay, so some of you may recall when, when, when we had a large turnout of faculty, the number thing the board wants is the opportunity for everyone to participate and everyone to be allowed to speak. We value that. I think we all see the importance of that. But I don't, I want everyone to come up here. I don't want to get in a, in a theme where we're all kind of repeating the same thing. So we want to hear your ideas and if, you know, and, and as broad of a discussion and a broad exchange of, of ideas as possible. So three minutes and we'll continue this on, but if it starts to get into repetitive theme, I think we've kind of heard the message at that point and, and we'll, we'll move on to the, to the agenda. But as long as we're having a, a good, healthy exchange of ideas and dialogue and discussion, we'll, we'll continue on for a little bit. Does that make sense to everybody? Okay.
I, I just want to add that it's, it's not an exchange. The board is not allowed to come.
Right, right. But we're hearing it.
Yeah, we're hearing it, yeah.
So maybe not the appropriate term, but, but we are hearing your, 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 your expressions, et cetera. So again, it makes sense to everybody? Okay, so I've got some. Do we have any more over there, Graciela? Cards filled out, Kim?
There, there are none, no more.
Okay. So off the top, and, and pardon me if I don't get the name right or whatever. Lisa Shute? Is that correct? Shut, okay. See, I messed up already right out of the gate. My apologies.
Shut the door.
Shut the door, okay. Well, we don't want to do that, so.
Well, good evening, thank you. My name is Lisa Shutt and I am a twenty-five-year employee of the district and I'm serving in my second term as C I C A treasurer. It is my honor to share with you that in attendance tonight are many, as you've noticed, classified professionals that support Y C C D. We are here from Central Services, both M J C East and West campuses and Columbia College. We are here as part of the four hundred-plus classified professionals that make it possible for this institution to serve our students and communities. Classified professionals carry a heavy load in the work we do. We represent Y C C D in person, online and over the phone. We build, paint, plant, move, clean and monitor all the district's buildings and grounds. We assist each individual from their very first step on, onto our campus until their last. We process every, every financial aid program certificate and graduation application, every enrollment form, work order, new employee or retiree benefit packet and invoices submitted. We serve food, create graphics, duplicate materials, loan books, provide instructional resources, drive buses, recruit students. We purchase, receive and deliver items. We set up computers, provide technical support, process payroll, repair vehicles, electronics, plumbing, HVAC units, and we keep our campuses safe around the clock and we do so much more. I couldn't list everything, but you get the idea. The goal of my public comment today was to highlight the significant contributions classified professionals provide to the entire functionality of this district. The theme of this year's Classified School Employee Week sums it up best. Classified professionals bring it every day. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Rosa Linda. And if you could. Viella?
Yara.
Yara, okay.
So I'm just going to call, I'm one of the student success specialists here at M J C. We work on the matriculation of students all the way through persistence through graduation. I know we have our C S E who kind of mentioned a little bit about that. We deal with students at all level, from the time they apply, dealing with their financial aid up until their classes. We have students that come in with COVID. We have students that come in with the flu, especially during final week when I got sick and I brought it home to my family, like I mentioned last time. The reason why I was reaching out is we've been trying to work with Dr. B, I know, and Dr. Sanders somewhere here in the crowd, about our classes. Just in this last month, I just want to let you guys know how our production is going, these text messages and this online media that's been going, just this month alone, just what I ran on the report before I came over, I had six hundred and fifteen students that applied for classes or applied to M J C this month. So just in the last two weeks since class started. So six hundred and fifteen means six hundred and fifteen students and right now there's twelve of us specialists. They need to help these students get their email set up, find classes, and right now we don't really have a whole lot of classes. I know we're working with Dr. B and Dr. Sanders to get some classes through the divisions. So that way we can serve all six hundred and fifteen students that have applied just two weeks. And that doesn't count the students that may be on right now that may be applying today or sometime tomorrow. So I'm just want to make sure that you know that, you know, yeah, we're classified, we're here, but we're helping those students get enrolled. We're working with the institution and the classified administration to make sure there's classes and making sure the students can log in, making sure they get their financial aid done by the end of the month. So our financial aid specialists are actually having to deal with all the F A S F A and all the information that's coming through. So together as classified staff, we work together, we work together at the various functions to actually serve our students, to serve the staff and make sure everything's functioning on campus. And I just look forward and I thank you for listening to our concerns today. Thank you.
You very much. Would anyone else like to come up and, and to the podium? Oh, okay. Thank you.
Hello, good evening, everybody. Thank you for the opportunity to be able to speak with you. I think we've met on Zoom and it's. Thank you. Oh, I knocked it over. Okay, can you hear me okay now?
Yes.
I think what I wanted to just express is that we have so many people here on campus who work very hard, as Lisa alluded to, but that six-point-five-six percent COLA, recently we had an eight-point-three percent inflation rate. And that six-point-five-six percent COLA doesn't even cover that inflation rate. And I think there are a lot of us that feel if we don't obtain that six-point-five percent COLA, anything less than that eight-point-three percent is a paycheck cut. Everybody works so hard here. Our work filters out to the community, it filters out to students, and I think a lot of classified people don't feel appreciated. And they may not say that directly, but I think that's the general consensus. And I think just agreeing to that COLA is an expression of appreciation. And we really would like you to consider at least agreeing to that minimum COLA rate. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ah, we have someone else. Okay.
This will make sense in a bit, I promise.
Okay. I thought maybe we were going to get some graffiti up here or something, I don't know.
Hi, my name is Chelsea King and I am president of the Young Adult Fighting Tobacco Coalition. Recently, our vice president, Faria Mulana Dada, came to one of your meetings to talk about the cleanup we conducted last Saturday at M J C's East Campus. And today I kind of wanted to update you on what we found. We had a total of six volunteers and we cleaned up around your campus. We started on Morris Avenue and then we went to College Avenue and Coldwell Avenue. Our cleanup lasted about an hour and during this time we collected six bags of litter. And does anyone want to take a guess on how many cigarette butts? Twenty-five, yeah. Three twenty-five. Nine hundred and eighty-six. And that was with one hour and six volunteers. You guys are not alone. This is an epidemic and unfortunately it causes many environmental hazards. Tobacco litter and specifically cigarette butts are the most littered item in the world and are the largest contributor of plastic waste and toxic waste. We hope these findings will encourage you all to address the negative impacts tobacco has had on your campus community. Not only is tobacco use a health epidemic. Not only is tobacco use a health epidemic, it is also an environmental hazard. The Young Adults Fighting Tobacco Coalition is here for whatever you need. We will continue doing cleanups. And we also want to encourage you to continue to support your campus community by passing a district-wide smoke and tobacco-free policy. This will not only protect the health of your students, but also the beautiful city of Modesto. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? I'm looking around the room. Okay. Well, I personally, having been a, served two stents as a, as a union president in my prior life, I do not want to let this moment go by without acknowledging your president, Amy Levitt, for getting you all here and, and bringing you all together in your blue shirts, which look great, by the way. And so I just want to give an applause to your, to your. Because it's, I've, I've tried it, and it's hard to do. So I, I personally, in my prior life, want to acknowledge your, your efforts and your great work with your members, so thank you for that. So, we'll move on from public comment, but any, I'm just going to make sure. Okay, Amy's given the no, so we're good, I think. All right. I can move on to the green sheets now. All right, we'll move on to 5.1, the Board Finance Committee Report. The Board Finance Committee, which some of you may know or not know, is made up of myself, trustee Dr. Milton Richards, and trustee Antonio Aguilar. So we met on September the 6th, normally a Monday, but the 5th was Labor Day. So we met on the 6th, and we had our usual update of, you know, the budget update, which we're, you know, we're, we're good with that as far as percentage of expenses and whatnot. We gave, we got a report on our FTEs, which is interesting. We are moving up. I think a lot of that has to do with the free-for-me and the opportunities that we're providing people in the community access to higher ed at our, at MJC and at Columbia. But it's also a potential reset for this district down the road as far as what our state apportionment is and where we're going to land when the, you know, we, we finally landed a set number on what our FTEs are. And so we've got to all work together on doing a better job of trying to get, whether that's high school students and that normal pathway to bringing students in, whether it's dual enrollment and CCAP, we're, we're going to have to all work harder, and that includes everybody up here, work harder on getting our FTEs up. Because that leads into the next discussion about, about budget. And so we had a good, healthy discussion about, about our budget. And yes, our budget looks good right now, but the state is basically, and we're going to get into this later, but I'll touch on it now. If we see a reset down the road on our state apportionment based on our FTEs, we're going to slowly work up to that line, and then we're going to, we're going to go past that with respect to our expenses. And we're not going to get any additional monies in the form of COLA. So it's going to change how, how this district looks a few years down the road. It's going to have a, it's, it's going to have an impact to, to the district as a whole. And then we had, what I thought was a really good discussion, our final topic, was our, our OPEB liabilities, and for those of you that don't know, is other post-employment, which is our retiree healthcare commitment. I think it's important that the district honor its commitments to, to current employees and particularly past employees. So I sit in another capacity as a, as a member of a retirement board, so I kind of get this stuff, but I'm not going to bore you with the details. But we dropped below, and a lot of that has to do with the bad year that the stock market had with our investments. So we dropped from a funded ratio, which was within benchmark. And we also dropped below what actuaries look at as far as a duration of how much money you have based on your annual payouts. So we've dropped below on percentage, on a funding ratio, and we've dropped below the, sort of the 20-year, what they call a 20-year benchmark. So the Finance Committee, it will recommend tonight to, to continue paying into that, to that, what we call the OPEB trust, retiree healthcare trust, to make sure that the district is honoring its commitments to retirees and, and our employees. So you will hear that tonight when we get deeper into the, into the budget. And that's kind of an overview of, of the Finance Committee. Am I leaving anything out? Dr. Richards? Nope? Okay. So that's all I have. That's all I have. Any questions? Okay. We'll move on now to 5.2, Board Policy Committee Report, and the chair is Nancy Hinton.
We have no report this month. We will be meeting next month in October. Will be our first meeting since we were off for the summer.
Okay. Thank you, Nancy. We'll move on now to 6.1, repopulating enrollment plan updates, Columbia College and Modesto Junior College and EOC update. So I think we have Amy up first. Hi, Amy.
Nice to see you in person.
See you.
Good evening, Chancellor Young, Chair Garrett, trustees. So I'm here to give a COVID update. You can move on to the next slide. So you'll see, these are the same charts that were shown last time with an update. So we know that wastewater reports, COVID testing positivity and case rates show a decline in COVID cases in Stanislaus County. The last report about wastewater was on the 7th, and it showed a 17% decline. Good news. A test positivity rate is currently 9.7%, and at the last meeting, it was 18.6%. We also see a decline on the right in hospitalizations. Our public health officer on Tuesday noted that we have 34 patients in the hospital and 48 deaths confirmed from April to mid-August. 85% of those deaths are among people 65 and older. Stanislaus County's CDC community level has moved from high to medium. And just another note that the county is expecting a heavy flu season after tracking some of the flu in Australia and what was happening there. So that's usually a predictor for what's coming our way. Next slide. So here's Toowalome County. You'll see here there's also a decline both in cases and hospitalizations. So in the last meeting, I reported a testing positivity rate of 15.1%. And this report from September 9th shows a rate of 10%. Hospitalizations also declined from six at the last meeting to one currently. Toowalome County's CDC community level has also lowered to medium. Next slide. So the next slide just shows guidance from CDC based on community levels, and we're yellow right now at the medium level. And you'll see that these are the, the recommendations up top for all levels. So up-to-date on vaccination, continuing those ventilation improvements, avoiding contact, following all the recommendations from isolation. If you're symptomatic, following those recommendations as well. And then for medium and high on the bottom, continuing to mask with high-quality masks if you are at high risk, and then just avoiding contact and continuing, continuing additional measures if you have contact in the home or in other gatherings. Next slide. So this last slide just shows our continuing mitigation efforts, both in the county and at Modesto Junior College and Columbia College. So we're continuing with, of course, ventilation. We have masking, masks available with still a strong recommendations from CDPH to mask in large gatherings. Vaccination, I will make a note about vaccination here, that the bivalent COVID booster shot is available, as I'm sure you've heard, and it targets both the Omicron sub-variants BA4 and BA5. And it can be given two months after a previous dose and can be given at the same time as the flu vaccine. Testing continues, therapeutics, medications as well. The county is trying to make sure that community providers have access to the therapeutics that are available. So for testing, just like at last meeting, I shared that testing is given out with the home testing kits. So we provide those in the school or division offices, but school offices, health services as well, and at Columbia College, continuing to provide those in the IMC for employees and health services for students. We're continuing the timely response and notifications for any cases that come through and responding accordingly and appropriately. We're still reporting to public health based on our Title 17 requirements and obligations. And really, the focus is continuing to be on high-risk areas and outbreaks. On Tuesday, the public health officer of this county shared that they will be rolling back their COVID response efforts. They'll discontinue bed polling, which is basically hospital bed counts, and will be returning the responsibility of COVID testing and treatment to private health providers. Salida and Turlock will continue the opt-in-serve testing sites until the state of emergency is lifted at the state level. And the county is working with community providers, as I mentioned, to ensure that medications like Paxlovid is available and other medications as well. This just came out yesterday, this new update from the county. So I did call Toowalome County, but I have not heard a response if they are changing any of their mitigation. Well, that's it. Any questions? Thank you very much.
It may be directed at Lena. Thank you for covering Columbia College, because we haven't found a replacement, correct, for Lorene. And so is Amy, are you double-dutying that? Or how are we covering, how are we covering that gap?
So there is, I forget her title, but her name is Lydia. She's working out of the office in Health Services. I believe she's also working with Basic Needs. But she is providing the contact tracing and the response at Columbia College. And we have met just to make sure our guidance is aligned and that she's following the current county guidelines. But I'm not doing any of the tracing there. I'm really just getting updates for the board, and I'm available to her and her team as needed. So you're welcome.
Thank you, Amy. Who wants to go next? Chair Garrett, Dr. B.?
All right. Good evening, Chair Garrett, trustees, colleagues from both Columbia and MJC. Good to see all of you, and some after a long time. Hey, Lana. Enrollment, well, we have made a very strong start to the fall semester. If you look at the PR numbers, last year, fall 2021, MJC was 4,000 FTEs. That was end of semester. This year, we're already hovering around 5,500. That's a gain of 10% FTEs. A 10% FTEs, I've done education statistics for the longest time in my life. It doesn't happen automatically or accidentally. When COVID began, our enrollment declined by 15%, followed by another 4%, a 19% drop from the high-water mark of 2019. This semester or this year, we are hopeful that we would gain, both MJC and Columbia combined, about 9% to 10% of those FTEs. That is, we would cover half the ground. At this point of time, as I speak, as a district, we are at approximately 8,500 FTEs, Columbia and MJC confirm. I can see Brian is nodding, which is, I'm correct. He's looking at the numbers, right? Yeah. I expect that we should be finishing up about anything between 14,000 to 14,500 FTEs, which goes back to the point that Chair Garrett was making. 9% up, great. But we were at 16,500 as a district, or 16,300. So 14,500 is still, 9% up, 1,800 FTEs down. Which way do you want to take this message? I want to look at this as glass half-full. This semester, we have 1,700 classes in MJC, 1,700 sections, give or take some. 40% on campus, 20% hybrid, 40% online. Demand onlines are high, on campuses are low. I can see Rosalinda is nodding, and we talk about that all the time. So it is like everybody else in the state. We are trying to figure out what is the right mix for the students. What do the students expect? Is it the online classes, on-campus classes? Now let's conflate that with some other information that we have. When we had our student welcome-back day, thanks to the Student Services team, we were estimating how many students? 350, 400, maybe 450? And they were, when 450 exceeded 500, then they're looking at, where is more food? We ended up having 1,300 students on that day, beating an expectation by 300%. We were overjoyed. We had a variety of events on the campus where we are seeing, yes, students are coming back, parking lots are full, Roland, thank you so much, where are you? I got a ticket the other day, so we don't discriminate. That's a good thing. So, but these are all good, good issues to have. Biggest challenges that we have, particularly on our institute day, we heard from our students, there are issues that face all of us, and these are just beyond inside and outside the classroom. We are talking about issues of food insecurity, shelter insecurity, mental health, safety as such on campus. Those are things that we were not accustomed to handling before, and we are taking all of these issues head-on. Amy has been working to bring, expand our mental health services. Now, when you consider, we have 16,000 students on campus. Whatever we do and the demand that we have, we need to keep on working on that. From the student services perspective, we are increasing our flow, that is, free lunch on Wednesdays, demands keep on increasing. We are working with a variety of agencies so that we can find homes for our students who are shelter insecure, and we would also embark upon creating a campus preparedness plan so in case of an emergency, we are ready at MJC as to what to do. We are not thinking about, who do we call in an emergency? But we know what to do in an emergency. So those are some of the broad-picture items that we're looking at. Overall, across the state, as I hear from my colleagues, most of the campuses are talking about a flat or downward enrollment. I think it's mostly flat. Some places like San Diego, they're talking about some gains. College of Sequoias, they are kind of pretty much high up. But I consider our performance to be great, and that's thanks to everybody pulling together. Our challenge now, how do we hold these students together, make sure they touch the finish line, graduate, and then move on in their lives? We are also embarking upon strong relationship with the county. Yesterday, I was at a city council meeting when I was privileged to receive a portrait of Charles Morris, one of our, our first presidents at MJC. They're also working with Stanislaus 2030, as well as City of Modesto, that as we go forward, how do MJC feature prominently in all of the plans of the county as well as the city? We have had many, many small victories in terms of fostering partnerships and programs with people like Frito-Lay, with people like Subaru, where we are training their workforces to keep on working all of, all of that. I would end by saying that enrollments are looking up. We are not where we would call ourselves out of woods in terms of where we were before. But working together, serving our students, I am confident we can achieve that enrollment level that MJC can do and continue to serve our communities. Questions?
Thank you, Dr. B. Dr. Tran?
Good evening, Chair Garrett, Chancellor, Board Trustees, our colleagues, and community members. Just as Dr. B. echoed, I think it takes a village to raise a student. And based on my time at Columbia College, I really have to echo and really proud of the team that we made, because before COVID, our highest number, 1819, is about 4,450, 4,500, given the years. As of today, I am so proud to share with everybody that Columbia College is at 2,600. So we're serving 2,600, giving our turnaround, and it didn't happen by accident. It's really, I'm looking at my Columbia folks here. It's that smile, Jen, it's that hi, making sure that the FI Academy, everybody's in place. So we're really proud of that. And we actually at 700 FTEs. So that happened of all the work. So after that, I'm actually working with research and exactly, how do we help our students finish their journey at Columbia College so that they can move on? So what we did, we took the numbers, and we looked at it, and I said, okay, how many students are taking between eight and 12 units? And if we can add, and I, that they can take another three units, they're 15, so they're full-time. Based on that research, we found about 393 students in that area. And then we further broke down and say, out of that 393, how many students is on that waitlist, so that one class they need in order to graduate? So we started at 78. Then when we met with my leadership team, we said, let's go out and work with our faculty. And we were able to ask our faculty to take on another student. And we were able to ask our faculty to take on another student, put more in the classes. And today, I could tell you, we dropped down to 34 students. And the 34 students is the reason either they took another class, but it wasn't a one unit, it wasn't enough to get them to the 15 units, or they dropped their pathway. So that's how we really look at, I call it, the high-touch support so that enrollment really do come to completion. So that is something we'll continue to work. And we also met with the foundation, and our foundation was very generous. They literally said, if you tell me a student couldn't finish a three-unit because there's challenges, let us know and how we can finish so that whether they work childcare, automotive, whatever life brings you. So for us at Columbia, that's what we are proud of, the work we do. In addition to that, we continue to advertise and I'll go, you know, each month, they're so nice, they're sweet up there, they give us a good rate. So we do our advertisement. And each week, we have a small ad, we're able to add things that is meaningful to the college that we can share. So in term of that, it's the general enrollment report. But we also noticed the shift in our student. The campus is vibrant, folks are coming back. Our student at Columbia actually enjoy the in-person classes. They like the closeness. So when it breaks down to it, it lends itself, the general ed, our student join more online. So it's like about 40, 50% are CTE students, they enjoy in-class. But overall, Columbia like a hybrid model. Most of, about 75 likes to take online and in-person. So as I share many times, for Columbia to move forward, that would be the best model for us. We cannot just be in-class only or online, but a hybrid where we bring the student together. And we even have, automotive has to open another section because we are growing back in our CTE program. But anyhow, I would stop there. We can go on, but again, I'm just very thankful coming to my role and to a beautiful campus with really truly caring employees who say, we want our student to do well. And I'm so, that they're open to my suggestion, like, let's try this, let's try that. So it's a good team. Thank you, and thank you for the report.
Thank you, Dr. Tran. Any questions for Dr. Tran? Dr. Tran, kind of to add on what you're talking about, the vision you have and, and bringing in more students. I think it's, Trevor, help me out. It's 2024, when the lease ends on our student housing. So maybe if we could, you and your team could start thinking about that and, and what your plans would be in regards to that? Because I think we need to put a little TLC
Yes.
into those, into those facilities, so.
Yes, we need to have that one-time funding go to on-campus housing. So definitely, we already have, we already have a lot of interest abroad right now. I could tell that Dubai, India, and Malaysia would like to come to Columbia. The reason why is that due to the pandemic, a lot of folks realized that, you know what? The world is more than just a tight-knit, busy city. They like the, the nature, get back into myself, like, how do we really touch? So the market is there. We didn't reach out, actually Dubai through Chancellor, reach out to us. And the reason why Columbia College is so attractive is because we have on-campus housing. And that is something we're negotiating with our operator. We're also looking at funding from the State Chancellor Office to build that out. But another area is that in order for an international student to stay, they have to be full-time. So for us, the idea is on-campus housing, full-time, is another exciting way for Columbia to grow. I mean, I might be aggressive, but I think we'll get back and even surpass the 4,000 due to the campus housing and the dedicated staff of Columbia College.
Oh, great. So we'll get, we'll, we'll start hearing your ideas about how we want to continue with that arrangement and how it's going to benefit your institution. Thank you, Dr. Tran. Who is next? Trevor, are you, are you next? Do you have any?
The EOC met at the start of the term, and we will meet as necessary. But as Amy pointed out, the numbers are heading in the right direction, medium on the community level. And so if we hear anything happening significant on campus, we'll meet again.
Chancellor, any update? Hey, anyone else? Okay, we'll move on now to 6.2 Association Reports. And we first have Associated Students of Modesto Junior College, and I think we have a new president of ASMJC, Caitlin Gross.
Good evening, Board of Trustees and Chancellor Young. I'm very happy to see you all this evening, and I hope you're having a great start to the year. My name is Caitlin Gross, and I'm currently serving as the ASMJC president. This is my second year in ASMJC and final year, as I'll be transferring in the fall with my agricultural science degree. One of my biggest goals in the future is to work in the education system and to be a high school agricultural teacher. During my time in ASMJC, I've grown and seen my team grow tremendously. I've made so many memories with my team and advisors, and I'm so glad I got to experience this and helped other students reach their full potential. Here's my report for ASMJC. ASMJC is excited for this new year, with students back on campus. This year is already off to a great start. As it started, at our swearing-in ceremony on August 18th, my team and I were officially sworn into office by some of the MJC executive leadership team. That following week, I had the honor to attend Institute Day. During Institute Day, I got to share ASMJC's top three goals of the year, which include filling ASMJC Student Senate positions, assigning senators to schools, and to continue to work on DEI. I had the pleasure to meet MJC's executive leadership team at Institute, Institute Day as well. This first week back to school, ASMJC put on Welcome Week and Welcome Day. Welcome Week is a great opportunity for us to help students find classes and to be there if they had any questions. ASMJC handed out snacks and some school supplies as well. During Welcome Day, we had over 1,000 students looking at the booths, which consists of services and activities around campus that students could participate in. There were also free food and games, and it was a great day with a huge turnout. During Welcome Day, ASMJC got a lot of interest and had over 10 new applicants just that day. Following that, ASMJC hosted Club Rush on September 7th. We had over 12 clubs participating and now have 20 active clubs. At Club Rush, ASMJC gave out free food and had a DJ there playing music. Lots of students were very interested in the clubs there, and it was a great turnout as well. Following Club Rush, there has even been more interest in joining ASMJC. Student engagement has skyrocketed in just the first couple weeks, almost doubling the student leaders that we have now than we started with just three short weeks ago. As everyone knows, today is Wednesday. ASMJC has officially started FLOW, which stands for Free Lunch on Wednesdays, where for this semester, we are giving out meal vouchers for students so they can use this for both campuses' cafeterias, and is in hope that we can help them during the school year. We can't wait for this, for this year's, we can't wait for what this year holds for MJC and ASMJC. As we dive into the new semester, ASMJC is excited seeing new students on campus and holding events. And I'd like to thank the Board of Trustees and Chancellor, Chancellor Young, as well as all the people who participate in this meeting. That concludes my report. Please let me know if there are any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Caitlin. Any questions for our new ASMJC president? No, welcome.
There is a question, I have a comment. I see the student leadership all the time, but Caitlin, your team is so energetic. I saw when it was 100-plus degrees and you were there, all of you were there, just supporting other students, putting up the flags, taking down the flags. You know, it's great to see that enthusiasm and leadership. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now I have Associated Students of Columbia College, ASCC President Andrew, are you with us? You see him anywhere, Graciela? Well, we'll do a placeholder for Andrew. If he pops into the waiting room later, we'll definitely circle back. Yosemite Faculty Association, YFA President Dimitri Karyotis.
Good evening, Chair Garrett, Trustees, Chancellor Young. So often agreements between district and YFA take place and we move on. The nature of our work is that there's always something needing our attention, which makes us prone to overlook an important pause. My point is that this is a fine time to pause, for YFA to show gratitude for the process that led to non-instructional faculty and their deans having the flexibility to serve students day and night. Along similar lines, YFA membership overwhelmingly voted to ratify the tentative agreement, which includes a salary increase, an increase that especially eases the challenges caused by recent inflation. Thank you, YCCD. And special thanks to HR and payroll for putting the pay increase in place so quickly. I conclude my report. Any questions?
Oh, I don't have any. Does anyone have any questions for Dimitri?
Thanks.
Thank you, Dimitri. We'll move on to LTAC and the LTAC President Gillian Daly. Dean Daly?
Which one do I, there's three microphones here.
I think we're pretty, rest assured, it'll pick you up on one of them.
One of them will pick me up. So, good evening, Board and Chair Garrett and, and everyone else tonight. The first thing I have to report is that since the August Board meeting, Leadership Team Advisory Council had its annual retreat, during which we created our main goals for the 2223 academic year. The first goal will be to conduct a limited handbook review. Our last review was in 2021 and resulted in major streamlining changes to the evaluation process, a revision to the makeup and charges of the LTAC, and the creation of the district-initiated reclassification process. The LTAC will be sending a survey out to the whole team for suggested areas for review. Our second goal will be to now create a mentorship program for onboarding new administrators. LTAC members will once again be working closely with both colleges and HR for what that might look like. The first session of the second YCCD Leadership Academy cohort begins this month. We're very proud of the creation of the Leadership Academy, and so we look forward to this next step, the mentorship program, in helping YCCD create stronger administrators. Next, having been told that the Board is moving away from YCCD tradition of passing on to the leadership team what has been negotiated for salary compensation for CSEA, the LTAC met earlier this month and created the following interests for salary meet-and-confer discussions. The leadership team therefore has an interest in one, treating the entire leadership team as one whole, of reaching median against our cohort, of preserving the tradition of compensating the leadership team equitably with CSEA, of retaining strong leadership and avoiding constant turnover, of preserving district fiscal stability, of supporting the Board's interest in creating superior customer service, and in meeting all the ACC, JC accreditation standards. All participants in LTAC meet-and-confer meetings on both sides of the table are senior administrators with much on our plates, especially at the beginning of the semester. Each hour spent gathering data and in discussion over COLA is time away from our important administrative duties. Beyond the tradition of treating staff and administrators equitably, acknowledging workload priorities has been another longstanding reason for passing that which has been negotiated with CSEA on to the leadership team. And from Steve Amador, he sent this to me last week, so it refers in the future, something that happened yesterday, but I'm just going to go for it. Columbia College is off to a great start, and it's encouraging to see students back in significant numbers. The buzz on campus is a telltale sign that the worst of the pandemic is behind us, and we're looking forward to providing educational opportunities for students. The most notable Columbia College LTAC activity is the upcoming Leadership Retreat. On Tuesday, yesterday, the leadership team will be getting away from campus and traveling to our Baker Station facility. President Dr. Lena Tran has a packed agenda that will allow members to set goals, develop a campus vision, and bond as a team. Columbia College leadership, hopefully they were excited yesterday about the start of the school year and looking forward to what this year has to offer. And I'm just going to add, the weather has been wonderful, so I bet it was a beautiful day up at Baker Station. And then I'll just add likewise, at MJC, students are back in classrooms, as Shantanu mentioned, the hallways are full and throughout the quads on both East and West campuses. So it's been very gratifying and has kept everyone busy, especially, I'm going to mention IT and media services specifically because many of the classrooms have been suited up with new state-of-the-art equipment that some faculty have been struggling with, but also due to the last two years of many of our classrooms sort of laying empty and dormant, the equipment had been unused, and so there's just been a lot of issues. But the help has been incredible, and everyone has been working as a team. The energy on campus is powerful. That ends my report. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Dean Daly. Thank you very much. We'll move on now to California School Employees Association, CSEA President Amy Levitt. Amy?
Good evening, Chair Garrett, Fellow Trustees, and Chancellor Young. Thank you for the recognition, but this was a group effort. I've been told the overflow is at capacity, and we're into the lobby right now. First, let's congratulate the 2022, excuse me, 2022 MJC Distinguished Classified Professional Award at the Classified Appreciation Breakfast. Jonathan Arias, Liz Conboyah, Jonathan Goodrich, Marcario Ramirez. At Institute Day, two classified professionals received the Purdy Award, Ty Hilton, Kevin Sanders. It truly is an honor to have classified professionals recognized for their dedication and service to MJC. Receiving awards and being recognized for individual efforts are great honors. Classified had heard countless times, we are the boots on the ground, the unsung heroes, the heartbeat of this institution. However, classified professionals do not feel that we are appreciated and valued as instrumental employees of YCCD. The words of praise are just that, words, because the following phrases are also heard numerous times by classified. One, now is not the time in regards to salary and developing a remote work program. Two, everyone must return to campus, even though classified have been, have never left or return of August of 2021. Three, you should be thankful you have a job in regards to salary and remote work. Four, you have evenings and weekends off provided by YCCD, but many classifieds do not have that luxury as departments do have a 24/7 operation. Other constituency groups, classified have the highest ratio of full-time employees, and yet the Board of Trustees only hears from one voice representing all classified during the Association Report Act. During the MJC Institute Day, there was a panel discussion of the three and seven. It was obvious there was a lack of classified representation on the panel. Classified professionals were once referred to as staff. Board Policy 7230 was recently updated to reflect the name as classified professionals. Across the district, we have not been given the respect in referencing the new title of classified professionals. Classified are told that the district must take, must make fiscally sound decisions and prepare for a potential downturn. Yet administrators have been approved to receive thousands of dollars in stipends and incentives for being employed and to continue, to continue to work at YCCD. The funded COLA is at a historical high. In addition to the increase of allocations from the State Chancellor's Office, reserves are at an all-time high. YCCD is willing to spend over $4 million on a new building, one-time funds will be moved from the reserves for deferred maintenance on buildings and facilities, offset about $1 million in student debt from the general funds, and be able to offer free tuition on parking to students. While those are great things, the perception has become that infrastructure is more important than the employees that work inside them. Employees are no longer valued as a vital asset, but a liability. Investing resources back into the employees, whether it be money, time, professional development, will increase morale, support will increase morale, support and improve retention and recruitment. There is one other resource that is typically overlooked, an intangible asset, our reputation within the community. When asked the question, "Where do you work?", the answer would be Marissa Junior College or Columbia College. YCCD is a pillar in our community. MJC and Columbia are well-known in the community. The people that are asking us where we work, they are students thinking about applying. A family member has attended or they just know that MJC or Columbia are institutions of higher learning. With every encounter, classified are sharing and connecting with the students and community that we serve. Classified professionals are the largest population for local advertising. We are typically the first person that a new or prospective student will encounter. First impressions matter. Classified professionals are employed here not just to receive a paycheck, but because we truly love our jobs. We are assisting the students and their families along every step of their educational journey. We love our students and this community in which we live and serve. Every month on the personnel agenda, our members retire after 20-plus years of service. We take pride in our work and will always be one of the first ones to go out of the way to help the student. The first week of the fall semester was celebrated at MJC with an event for students, Welcome Day. Lives were created, duplicated and distributed. The event was promoted. Campus grounds were prepped and cleaned. Wiring and sound systems through media had to be completed. Booths, tables and chairs were set up and staffed. Student swag bags were prepped. Campus was kept clean. Restrooms were stocked. Students were directed to buildings. Informed new and returning students of the programs and resources that are available to them and services were provided to students the same day. How is an event of that magnitude able to be successfully executed, classified professionals? CSEA leadership have asked the classified professionals, Union Brothers, Sisters and Siblings, to stand beside me in unity, to be valued and respected for our work ethic, ideas and contributions that we bring to the colleges and district-wide committees and councils. We are instrumental employees of YCCD. I would like to reiterate this year's CSU theme. Classified professionals, what do we do? Thank you for the opportunity to speak to the Board of Trustees on behalf of CSEA after 4:20.
Thank you, Amy. Any questions for Amy? Comments? Faculty representative to the Board, Alan McIsaac.
Good evening and thank you for this opportunity to address you. Since I last saw you, we are now in our third week, a substantial return to on-campus operation. I will confess that I felt some apprehension at teaching in person after two and a half years teaching solely on Zoom. I was surprised to hear some colleagues, all excellent teachers, express the same sentiment about worry that we have become too rusty. Also, remote instruction, as in any medium of communication, has its downside, but it has its advantages as a mode of instruction, which many teachers want to use and not lose. I am pleased to report that I quickly thought about riding a bicycle. You do not forget how. But I may have lost touch a little with how much I love that bicycle. That bicycle is now a later, more improved model, including features adapted from remote instruction. Colleagues I have spoken to report the same reactions to the first three weeks. There have been glitches, like those occasioned by smarter classrooms that include new computers. Dean Daly referenced this and I'll give you one example. Making projection systems work smoothly, but as Dean Daly said, media services on it and faculty members are sharing workarounds in the meantime. Speaking of media services and other classified professionals, I've always been impressed with the skill and service they bring to the college mission, but even more so lately. Faculty members cannot do their job without them. One example I feel like bringing up is today, one of our IT classified professionals insisted on spending part of his lunch hour in my office making my new computer work with the printer. It's a work in progress, by the way. Speaking of collaboration, YFA president Dmitry has addressed the success of goodwill and persistence when added to our own capable people. Another example on the horizon is revision of BP 6305 Board Reserves. The Board listened to what constituencies had to say and at this point, there is a draft procedure, a new draft procedure for 6305 and the District Policy and Procedure Committee is discussing it as part of our policy review process. As you know, that review routes through District Council and your own Board Policy Committee before it comes before the Board again. Recess continues. Last time I spoke with you, I mentioned concerns about accessibility for mobility impaired students and employees. In my own Communication Studies Department, which is not a particularly large academic department, there are two faculty members now who must use wheelchairs. I already learned from my own family experience that when someone you are close to suddenly becomes long-term mobility impaired, your consciousness gets raised abruptly. Our district has already done a great deal to create accessibility and the equity it implies, but more remains to be done. Thank you again for the special interest and attention from trustees Beggs and Hinton. I am pleased to say there is currently discussion on reconstituting the Accessibility Committee at MJC. Again, goodwill, persistence and our capable people will get it done. Thank you again for this opportunity to address you.
Thank you, Alan. Any questions, comments for Alan? Yeah, Alan, thank you very much. We'll move on now to Academic Senate reports. Columbia College Academic Senate President Lana Vonn.
Oh, hello, everyone. It's so nice to see you this evening in real life. Hello and everybody on Zoom, hello to you too. My report this evening is based off of a survey sent to faculty, so I'm excited to get to report directly from the faculty's mouths here. So lots of good things happening at Columbia College, as usual, as we expected. Our Go Columbia days this summer in person were a huge hit for incoming student population. We've had Math Jams, Melissa, and our Jump Start Workshop to further help students in their successful start at Columbia. We've had advising guides implemented as part of our Guided Pathways Initiative. They're online and in print for students to see the programs we offer and the coursework required to achieve their goals. And when you come up to Columbia for the October meeting, I would love to show you the hallway where they were all hanging beautifully in the Manzanita Building. So classes and counseling services are available in person as well as remote or at a distance, making all of our counselors available to our students in any way possible. And this is from the English Department. English 1ae, the enhanced first-year composition is being taught for the first time this semester. This course was created four years ago in response to AB 705 and we're very excited to be able to offer this to support our students now. In the math department, also response to AB 705, we have continued our support courses for our transfer lover courses and are hoping to bring on more support courses in the near future. We're looking forward to upcoming Claim Jumper Day on the 29th of September. I hope that you will be able to join us, board members, so that our community can come to campus and see what everything is all about. And for faculty, we have our Teaching Learning Community, TLC. We've got our professional development opportunities with our theme of Metacognition and this is the book that we are using right now. This is Teach Yourself How to Learn and I've already started implementing some of these things with my students in class. If you'd like a free copy, I can get one for you when I see you again in October. Academic Senate has reaffirmed our dedication to our students with the refrain of "Students above all." And is this good for students and how? And by the way, the "Students above all" is inscribed on a bench on the Manzanita Building. So that's important. It's a foundation. We are in the midst of accreditation at Columbia College. As you also know, I know you're doing your self-study report this evening. So we're in full swing. Most of the faculty are involved in the self-study. And our workshop from last week with Catherine Webb, we heard many times, "No, college is perfect." So we're in our cycle of continuous improvement, working on supporting things that need to be supported and continuing on for the good of our college. What's good for students is good for our college, is good for the district. And to that end, just as faculty are continually evaluated in a process of self-improvement by our students and our peers and our administration, we are very interested in bringing a cycle of continuous improvement to our administrative team as well with looking at a continuous cycle of, where did I put it? Ongoing cycle of evaluations for our admin team. So we're looking forward to discussing that at our college and bringing that to you. So in terms of ongoing things, cycle of improvement, we're going to need some improvements in a couple of areas. One of them is that students are very frustrated, parents are frustrated with no physical bookstore on campus. So that is just, it comes up every single semester that this is a frustration. It hasn't gone away. Our efforts so far are not sufficient. So we're going to have to figure out a different way to meet the needs of our students and our parents in terms of our bookstore on campus. We're also working on our faculty hiring prioritizations to make our recommendations to Dr. Tran about ongoing hiring. At our faculty retreat, we came up with some guiding principles for our faculty prioritization. Keep our areas of strengths strong. Partnership with our community with opportunity for skill sets for our local jobs and increasing outreach and marketing while decreasing barriers for students in many ways. One of those is making data-driven decisions for what modality we offer our classes. In the math department, we are looking at, should we continue offering completely online asynchronous classes? And we're doing so with an eye towards, while they're filling, those online classes are filling, but are the students successful at the end? We don't want to offer something that students really are just gonna be failing in. So we're taking a very close look at that. One of the things that I would like for the district to put their heads together and come up with a good solution for is how can we have a full-time person that serves the district at both colleges? For instance, could we have a full-time physics instructor that's such-and-such percentage at MJC and such-and-such a percentage at Columbia College, making that one faculty member that is shared by the district, sharing that font number? That's something that we really need to figure that paperwork out. The other challenge is going on at our campus, this is the last thing, is that we have, let's see, we have six administrators, three of which are in interim positions, many in new positions and it's creating some unease on campus. I know that that's gonna be figured out soon, I hope, but it is something that is like, well, we don't know who to talk to and they may not know what they're doing yet anyway because everybody is so new. On the other side, we've got lots of unfilled and interim classified professional positions, lots of empty desks in the classified professionals in our Manzanita Building and it's making for an inefficient and stressful work environment. Those are not my words, those are the words sent in to me by our faculty. There's things that are falling through the cracks and there's just not enough of our classified professionals to do the work that needs to be done. Our classified professionals are of course very dedicated. I see them arriving early, staying late, taking work home on the weekends, working through lunch, and none of this is sustainable. All of this, well, of course, the CSE negotiations are going on in the background and our classified professionals, highly qualified, and the college function grinds to a screeching halt without their incredibly valuable work. So we need to continually work to keep and attract these valuable classified professionals with fair and competitive reaches. And I'll leave you with that. If you have any questions, I am here.
Thank you, Lana.
Thank you all so much.
Marissa Junior College Academic Senate President, Aisha? How are you? Well, I owe you an apology first because we had a, or I had a commitment to attend your Institute Day and COVID struck me down, so I was pretty much wiped out. So Leslie filled in for me at the last moment, but I want to extend my apologies even though it was out of my control. It was quite something to go through. So, and I want to let all of you know as a side note, if you have to get transported to the hospital by MR, they won't contact you or anything. If they get your wrong insurance information, they just send you to collections. So be prepared for that. I'm getting a nod at the back of the room. So yeah, it's quite something to work with. Anyway.
No apologies.
Sorry I missed you.
No, I'm glad you're feeling better and thank you, Aisha Beggs, for filling in. And thank you to the Chancellor and our executive administration team. They all joined us for some faculty orientation events that were really well-attended and well-received and we have some future regular events in the works to continue to support our new faculty as they make their transition to our campus community. Hello, everyone. It's so nice to see everyone in person. This is my very first time being here in person and it's wonderful. I'm excited to be here today and I'm looking forward to going to Columbia next month. The fall semester at MJC is off to an invigorating start. We had an immensely successful welcome event for students, which you've heard quite a few of us talk about. We ended up having around 1,300 students come to campus to kick off this semester. I have never been so happy to have a difficult time finding parking and then to sit in 105-degree heat for hours. Serving those students, it was wonderful and it was great to see faculty and classified professionals, administrators and community members all come together for this event to support our students and welcome them to the campus. And I do feel the need to point out that I went to three welcome events that first week for students and every single time, everything was ready. All I had to do was show up to be able to support our students and I know that's because our classified staff is there unlocking those rooms and putting all the supplies in there. It makes it to where our time as faculty can be completely focused on our students and I really appreciate that behind-the-scenes work. Since our summer training, faculty have been working on the evidence gathering portion of our accreditation. We look forward to working cooperatively with all constituent groups, our sister college and the district and Board on this important effort. Our Senate has only met once so far this semester, but it was a long and robust meeting with a lot of important discussions taking place. We decided on some next steps to restructure our Senate to make it reflect our new college structure. We no longer have divisions. We've moved to schools. And so now that schools exist to vote in their representatives, we need to restructure our Senate to reflect that. We'll be discussing it more at our Senate meeting next week and hopefully we'll be able to solidify some plans for that transition. We also discussed the Faculty Wellness Series being organized by the Senate's Wellness Work Group. We have our first communal walk on the 19th and are organizing lots of other wellness events and workshops for faculty. This is all done in response to the Faculty Climate Survey that we did last semester that I spoke to you about then. Faculty overwhelmingly mentioned a desire for more support when it comes to wellness and mental health. We have some drawing-together events, both virtual and in-person in the works, as well as some workshops for breathing and relaxation techniques, music visualization, journaling. We're talking about some restorative yoga and all of these are being provided by our faculty. We're just tapping into the talent that we have at our college. Not a single person has told me no when I've gone to them and asked them to hold a workshop in support of our faculty. So thank you to all of you faculty who have so willingly participated in creating these events. Our goal is to create accessible events that strike a balance between physical and mental well-being and in multiple modalities, so that no matter someone's physical ability or accommodation needs or their comfort level coming to campus, there's something for everyone to be able to participate in this wellness series. And we're hoping that this inclusive faculty community can be strengthened through these events. Lastly, in an effort to increase transparency and the reach of Senate communications, we are introducing a bi-weekly newsletter that will contain the highlights of Senate work, celebrate faculty accomplishments on campus and in our community and announce faculty appointment openings to encourage a broader participation by our faculty at MJC. That concludes my report for today. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Aisha. Any questions? All right. Thank you again. 6.3 Presentation Updates, YCCD Chancellor Young.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My first item is college reports. I'm going to call on Dr. Shantanu Bandiapate, President of MJC, to give us a college report.
Well, I kind of provided a report on enrollment and updates. So I can do an action replay if you want to see my performance one more time, or I can give you back the time.
I think you covered everything, but if there's something you left out, we'll loop back to you at this moment.
We are good. Thank you.
Okay, all right. Dr. Tran.
Thank you. Kimberly's gonna come around and give you a bag. So for our in-service day, and there's a whole package. So I'm gonna go by, some have been mentioned by our senate and our representative. But this is the bag that we gave out to each of our faculty staff that attended the in-service day. We had a really good crowd, about 80 folks that show up. And in the bag is what we get. And if you can see the theme, it really truly resonate what Columbia has gone through. It's like together we can, because without togetherness, we cannot. We had fun. We had hot breakfast, lunch, music. It was a wonderful day. So if you look in your package, there's a flyer or different activity that's coming up or that it might have happened. I'll go by size. So please don't forget September 30th is when the foundation has our anniversary. So that's one. On in-service day, we actually have a fruit to welcome all of our new employees. So you can see Columbia is growing. We have back-to-back of new employees. So it's wonderful, very, very great group of hiring. We have the agenda. And like MJC, we have also, we could welcome, the wow, we could welcome. Each day, we really welcome our student in different area strategically with counseling, with donuts and coffee and treat, you know, student love food. We love food. I love food. Also wellness snack, and we have that. Last Friday, thank you Chancellor Young for coming, joining us. You'll see picture, we have our accreditation workshop. I mean, from serving at previous institution, I was so like in awe how Columbia is really embracing accreditation. So it's a great team effort. Like it was music to my ears when I hear someone, someone actually said, I love accreditation. What part? Like you can take all parts. So we were good. Anthony was kind to us, fed up. It's been so long since we had baked potato, which is like come back. So it was a great day with Chancellor Young up there and Catherine Webb. Indeed, yesterday, we had our Columbia Leadership Retreat at Baker Station. So those are the pictures you saw. Actually, we crashed in one of our classes that in forestry. And I'm just amazed that it literally take, please, I welcome everyone to Baker Station. It is a most beautiful place that just, indeed, in Steve Report, I had this whole thing like planned out. We're gonna do vision, we're gonna do strategic, we're gonna do all this work. But when you come up there and all this tree, I just have to mellow out. So what we did is we crashed the class, we took a hike. We actually hiked part of the Pacific Coast Trail, very famous. I didn't know that went from entity, and there's a loop and we could climb. And then if you see here, our team did a trust walk. So it's very important, we trust. There's a video of Trevor, I say, oh, you know, black mountain one day. And we also learned different trees and how the weather is so dramatic that certain tree actually bent, like it's all fascinating. And then one of our staff actually teach us how to paint. So we all paint. It was a really wonderful day. And what I learned is that sometime it's really easy to sit at our desk because it's easy to do the work. It's so much work. But I really took the time, said we have to go, and we all did. It was a great day. And there's a quote that I really resonate because I try to do LinkedIn. I think it really touched me personally and the team is, "I took a walk in the woods and came out taller than the trees." And I honestly think that David Henry Thoreau said that. And our team came off, everybody felt that fresh air, that we felt much better. So for Columbia College, Baker Station is another area for growth because our student, if you see the picture, we crashed with a picture too. I said, we need to take a picture. Daytime is already over 20 students and we're not running two session, which is, I can't wait for May. But I invite everybody, please come up to Baker Station, let us know. We'd love to host you, whether you want to have PSEA retreat. The senate, the senate has been there a week before, so they beat us to it. But that's what we had. Lana Hesha, we have coming up for our Columbus Day, Clem Jumber's Day on the 29th. So please welcome, this is our way to showcase. And then lastly, the hundred report, the days report for Columbia College. So a lot of things are happening at Columbia College, but those are some of the highlights that is going on for the month of September. Thank you.
Thank you. Now I'm going to call on Gracila Molina to give a brief update regarding what policy review process on non-substantive changes. Gracila?
Trustees, so on August 16th, the executive board, who are subject matter area experts in the district policy review, met to continue their annual review of chapters one and two relating to the district and the Board of Trustees. So during the review, we discussed non-substantive changes and reviewed Board Policy 2410, which deals with board policies and administrative procedures. In that policy, it states that non-substantive changes, such as updated code references and external agency name changes, shall not require board approval but are presented to the board as information items. Previously, there, we were working under the request and direction of the board that all those non-substantive changes would go through the policy review process. However, in an effort to make sure that all of those are accurate, that committee, the executive board, requested that those non-substantive changes be made, you know, as soon as possible so that our policies are as accurate as possible. Just wanted to make that note.
Thank you. Thank you. My last item is to give an update on a meeting between Dean Martha Robles and a group of CEOs for hospitals in Stanislaw, Toolumi, San Joaquin Counties. So let me call on Dean Martha Robles.
Sorry, let's see. Okay, can you hear me? Good, okay. Good evening. Thank you. I want to acknowledge and thank Chancellor Young for providing the opportunity to meet with members of the Hospital Council. I was proud to share data and information about our exemplary nursing program. During the meeting, I highlighted some of the following. Our nursing program earned the California State Chancellor's Office Strong Workforce Gold Star Award. And the reason for this is that our students in the program had a 230% increase in earnings. 84% of our graduates attained a regional living wage. And 100% of our graduates were employed in their field of study. So we're very, very proud of that. Our nursing program earned a successful BRN accreditation site visit. And the program's self-study was used as an exemplary model. This year, we have a team of faculty participating in training to pursue the national accreditation. The program in 2020 had 115 graduates with a 96% first-time NCLEX pass rate. And in 2021, we had 113 graduates with a 95% first-time NCLEX pass rate. And the NCLEX is the board test that the nurses, the students take to become an RN. And those numbers far exceed our state average. For those of you that might not know, the Hospital Council was supporting the nursing program for a number of years. And in 2018, we, the funding was discontinued. So again, I appreciated the opportunity to meet the CEOs of the Hospital Council. The meeting provided an opportunity to thank our hospital partners and invite new potential partners to open their facility to our students for clinical rotation. We value the hospital partners and impressed upon them our appreciation for supporting our nursing students in clinical. Students will not be able to complete the required clinical hours without their support. Our current clinical partners are Adventist Health, Doctors Medical Center, Memorial Hospital, Emmanuel Center, Kaiser Permanente, Valley Children's Hospital, Doctors Behavioral Health, and Modesto Post-Acute, along with Adventist Health Sonora, their units six and seven, which serves geriatrics. The main topic for discussion was program expansion, which is an interest among a lot of us in our community. And the critical need to have continued commitment from the hospital partners to secure additional clinical sites as well as provide financial support. It was exciting to learn there is strong interest to once again financially support the nursing program as well as continued support for clinical placement. We also discussed the reduction in the program numbers due to the pandemic, which resulted in limited clinical spaces for our students. I'm gonna share a few examples in terms of numbers. The program typically has a cohort of 50 students each semester. But in the fall of '21 and in spring of '22, due to the pandemic, each cohort was reduced to 40 students with 30 at MJC and 10 at Columbia College. And this again was a result of not having clinical placements. But the good news is, starting with this fall, we returned to 50 students in the cohort, 40 at MJC, and 10 at Columbia. In spring of 2023, the number of students between our second and third semester may increase by 10 students based on the LVN transition. So we would be going up to 60 students as we move them through the semesters and into graduation. We are currently looking at fall 2023. We're looking into an incremental increase to 60 students as the starting point. 40 at MJC and increasing Columbia from 10 to 20 students. The increase at Columbia would be based on a partnership with Sonora Regional Hospital to meet some of their specific needs. Now costs for these increases include full-time positions, additional part-time instructors to lead clinical rotations with each additional group of 10 students, plus additional support staff. These costs are significant but achievable with the commitment to secure clinical sites and additional funding. However, without full-time and part-time nursing faculty and staff and additional clinical placements, 60 graduates each semester would be the maximum we would be able to deliver. If MJC is able to prioritize additional new faculty nursing positions along with funding from the Hospital Council and additional partners, we have the potential to incrementally expand the cohort to 80 graduates. But that's gonna take time. We are moving forward in a positive direction, taking incremental steps for MJC in collaboration with the external partners to achieve growth in the program in response to the needs of the community. Once again, I want to thank Chancellor Young for opening the door of opportunity to once again connect with the Hospital Council. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes my report.
I wanna, I wanna start off by, by Dean Robles, this is great news. I mean, this is exactly what, you know, a couple trustees on the board have been asking for this, this leadership and momentum and providing that service of nursing graduates to the community. So I really want to applaud your efforts. And now I want to, if they want to, Dr. Milton Richards, excuse me, trustee Dr. Milton Richards or trustee Aguilar, if they want to make any comments in regards to this.
I'm just pleased we're moving in the right direction. And I thank everybody from the president to the chancellor, to the dean, to the nursing faculty. Thank you.
Just the same thing, thanks for all the work that everybody put in on it and just working towards getting more opportunities to our community and our kids. Thank you. Thank you for all the hard work.
Absolutely.
I want to thank Martha for her report and for, how do I want to say it, laying out for us the future into the next two years. A couple things, I was present at a meeting with Chancellor Young with the president of the hospital. And the collaboration, and I sit on the hospital's governing board as well. And the collaboration and interest in expanding up in the foothills is very, very supportive. So I'm thrilled to hear the proportionate increase to the spaces available in the year 2024 to double in Columbia. And I know that Michelle Fuentes, the president of Adventist Health, minor correction, there's no hospital called Sonora Regional. It's called Adventist Health Hospital. But, you know, in Toolumi County, many of us make that mistake. But Adventist Health has been incredibly collaborative. And more than anything, I'm just really pleased to see the cohort increase, not just at Modesto Junior College but at Columbia. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, we'll move on now to item 6.4 District Administration of State Reforms on closeout. And you all received a packet in your board agenda as well as detailed information on an update on the major E projects and funding. We have our senior director of facilities here tonight. If Judy wishes to, or if we have any questions, okay?
Good evening, board and chancellor. Before you this evening is the completion of our bond measure. Are there any questions on any of the closeout for these projects?
I just so pleased that we're finally closing this out and applaud your efforts as well as the Major E Oversight Committee and everything. It's just been fabulous. So thank you all very much.
Thank you, and thank you for your support. And I would just like to acknowledge my assistant director, Yolanda Avila, or Paragil, excuse me, who's really supported me during this and taken on many of these projects. So thank you all. We're glad we're done.
We'll move on now to action items for consent. And those are items R. 7.2 through 7.10. First, does any trustee wish to pull any item from the consent calendar?
Trust, Chair Garrett, on behalf of trustee Beggs, who had to leave this evening, I'll speak on her behalf for item 7.2 purchase orders.
We will pull the item 7.2, so the remaining balance, which is item 7.3 through 7.10. I have a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
A motion made by trustee Dr. Milton Richards. Is there a second? Seconded by trustee Nancy Hinton. May we have a roll call, well, pardon me.
I don't see it.
8:48. 8:48?
Dropping the ball here. I have it. I have it. I got it. Found it. Thank you. All right. I want to recognize Hermogutierrez, 22 years of service, food service coordinator, auxiliary services at- uh, auxiliary services at Modesto Junior College. I wish her well in, in her retirement and whatever exciting plans she has for the future. I want to acknowledge Wendy Long, seventeen years of service, Senior Administrative Secretary, Science, Engineering and Mathematics at Modesto Junior College. As well, Wendy, I, I wish her well and her retirement and her future plans. All the excitement that goes with that. Um, want to recognize Mika Miller. Um, twenty-six years of service, instructor of biology, art, science, uh, and human performance at Columbia College. You know, we always hard to find instructors of biology, so I know she will be, she will be missed in that regard. And I wish, uh, Mika all the best in her, uh, retirement and future endeavors. And finally, Elaine Schuber, twenty years of service, Senior Administrative Secretary, Allied Health at Modesto Junior College. We were just talking about, about that team and all the great things they're doing. So Elaine, I wish her well in, in her future endeavors and retirement and all the best to all of our retirees. So with that, we will now, uh, take a roll call vote on seven point three through seven point ten.
Mine is seven point two.
Correct. Seven point three through seven point ten. Roll call vote.
Trustee Aguilar?
Aye.
Trustee, uh, Balkan?
Aye.
Trustee Hinton? Trustee Richards?
Yes.
Nicolau?
Yes.
Chair Garrett?
Yes.
We have a vote of six zero in favor, or six in favor, one not present, uh, trustee vice chair Beggs. Uh, motion carries.
I should put it into the record, uh, so everyone, uh, trustee Beggs' father, uh, was recently taken ill. And so, uh, she needed to step out, uh, for the balance of the meeting to deal with, with, uh, his, his medical needs. So we wish her and her family the best. So, uh, we'll now discuss seven point two.
Trustee Beggs asked me to bring this up, um, in, in the event she had to leave. And in item seven point two on the purchase orders, um, in particular, page eleven of nineteen of the purchase orders or page thirty-six of one twenty of the packet. And it's regarding, um, purchase order for Digital Scepter Corporation. She was concerned at the, the large dollar amount, three point six million dollars plus. And she wanted to, um, understand what that was, number one. But it, it, it reminded her of the times where she's asked for a technology report or an update or, and she wanted to make sure that, um, that's really what she really wants to get a bigger picture of, of what we all recognize as the enormous costs of technology and how we can't live without it. But that was just a, an eye catcher at that amount. So uh, she really wanted just an understanding of what that item was, but to underscore it with the need for a, a bigger presentation.
Vice Chancellor Trevor Stewart?
Uh, trustee, or Chair Garrett and I, uh, both know a, a, about the reason behind this purchase, uh, as it relates to insurance and the need to make sure that we're protected from uh, any encroachment, uh, or hacking of our data. And, uh, we have been able to maintain insurance, but the recommendation and almost threat, if you will, is if you do not improve your firewalls and protect your data, that you will no longer be insured. And so if you are hacked and there is a ransom for your data, uh, that insurance will no longer cover that for you. So that was the primary reason why we had the start of this conversation. I believe that we brought this information to the board about six months ago uh, and had a discussion specifically about this purchase. So now it is at that time where the order has been placed and that's why you're seeing it as a purchase order. Our, our firewall system is approximately ten years old. And, and in that time, obviously, technology has changed and updated. And so the funding for that, we felt it so important that we did use, uh, some of the central services reserves that have been saved over from prior years. The intent of those reserves is to spend it on items that benefit the colleges. And obviously, we feel that protecting student data uh, as well as all of our data is, is vital. And so that's why that significant purchase needed to be made. So this was again, in a sense, driven by insurance, but also driven by our IT personnel that have recommended that we move forward with this significant update.
And I'll just add from, from, uh, my position on the, oh, go ahead, Dr. B.
Yeah, this is just to bring to your attention that there was one college in our system, which was, which suffered from a cyber attack last year. Cause the shutdown, loss of student population, they spent an enormous amount of money. This year, just three days before the fall semester, they were attacked again. So these threats are becoming real. And once it happens, your entire student data is locked and quantifying how much loss that is, if it happens, it would easily run to millions of dollars. Not only talking about the ransom money that we pay, but the loss of students and so on and so forth. And this college is very close to us.
Are we talking about?
Uh, that purchase is significantly equipment. Um, it does include software subscriptions as well, but it's primarily equipment. Again, replacing ten-year-old equipment.
As you all know, the, the, the landscape of information technology has, has changed dramatically year over year. And, uh, we were behind the times with our firewalls and our, and our, uh, abilities, you know, the ease of people to be able to log in to our system. So we needed to improve all of that. And we were given a, a, a grace period, uh, as it were, with our, um, insurance JPA that we belong to and a consortium with, with, uh, other community colleges. And it just got to the point where they finally said, you, you've got to do this or, or you're not going to be insured in the case of a ransomware attack or whatever harm your district suffers as a result of, of someone hacking into your system. So we're kind of behind the times, but we're, we're fixing it now and that's what this, this is for. That summarizes it, Trevor.
Yes, thank you, Chair.
So now a, a motion to approve seven point two.
So moved.
Moved by trustee Balkan. Is there a second?
Second.
Again, by trustee Nicolau. Roll call vote, please.
Aguilar? Vice Chair Beggs, I will mark her not present. Trustee Balkan?
Aye.
Trustee Hinton? Trustee Richards?
Yes.
Nicolau?
Yes.
And Chair Garrett?
Yes.
Vote is six in favor with one not present. Motion carries.
We will move on now to item eight point one, the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three YCCD, uh, district final budget. We've got three minutes.
I need to hit the join audio.
Oh, ignore, ignore the thing in the middle of my screen. Don't do that.
Thank you, Board of Trustees. This presentation is essentially a follow-up of last month when we had a board study session on the budget. So this is, uh, not three minutes, but it is a shorter presentation. And so uh, there, there were things that we discussed last month, such as multiple year revenue projections that are not covered in this. And those are important to remember as we do look at uh, what we are, uh, seeing as far as our revenues are concerned in the prior and in the current year. So we'll look at how last year ended up. We'll talk about where we are in the state budget process and we'll, uh, get an idea for the twenty-two, twenty-three final budget or YCCD. So as it relates to last year, uh, as it relates to revenue, we were a little over three million dollars ahead of budget. And I'll get to a slide in just a minute to show why we were ahead primarily uh, for the revenue related to new funding for full-time faculty hiring as well as part-time faculty office hour. On the expenditure side, uh, we were, um, we underspent due to continue to have vacancies, the efficiencies that the board has asked us to achieve over the last several years. And so you can see on the line thirteen there, total expenditures about three point six million. Uh, so overall, on line twenty-one, about four point five million to the good on, uh, the expenditure side. So when you combine an increase of revenues over budget as well as a decrease in expenditures compared to budget, you see in row twenty-two that we were six point three million better than our budget. Whereas when we had put the, um, budget document together the year before, we were anticipating a, a small spend down of reserves. So as we ended the twenty-two, twenty-three year, we ended with, uh, reserves of thirty-nine point three million, definitely the largest amount uh, that this district has had. We were aware of this and we started having those conversations as we developed a tentative budget. Uh, so again, just to recap on, uh, Fund Eleven for last year, revenues came in according to projections as well as some new revenue sources. And we had those efficiencies and savings at all sites that resulted in expenditures below budget. So we talk about a January budget, we talk about a May revise, and then we hear that the state budget is signed by the governor. Well, that's not all that occurs. There are uh, additional reviews and legislative actions as well as continuing to hear items as they're implemented. So we're pretty much wrapped up the statewide budget process. But we are still learning about some of our new revenues and the, uh, available uses of those funds. As it relates to the twenty-two, twenty-three budget for Fund Eleven, we do have a significant increase in row one there, our total computational revenue. Uh, that's a term for our overall apportionment that we receive from the state. Uh, we do show a two and a half percent deficit factor. In normal years, that would probably be a one percent deficit factor. We enter the twenty-two, twenty-three year with talks of recession, talks of statewide revenue collections already being lower than budget. And so it seems prudent to make sure that, uh, we are not overestimating our revenue. And so again, this is a higher, uh, deficit factor that we, than we've used in the past. It feels appropriate at this time. Uh, so for the year, we're looking at about a hundred and forty, one hundred and forty point five million in Fund Eleven revenue. As it relates to expenditures, uh, the bottom line there, the unrestricted general fund expenditures of about a hundred and thirty-seven million. Included in that are some new ongoing items, uh, in, in rows nine through thirteen. There are some, um, one-time allocations that we'll get to in the next page. So essentially what we're seeing is a balanced budget with a little bit left over to deal with, uh, future year increases. And we'll talk about that in a minute. As it relates to one-time augmentations, um, some of these are standard. We do it year over year as it relates to dollars that the colleges or central services had that had not spent. And so we allocate the encumbrances in the following year. Uh, we authorize through the board's actions an energy efficiency project, which is currently underway. At the, currently, I believe it's at the West Campus and will soon be making its way over to the East Campus. Each site in row eighteen is allowed to maintain some of its, uh, savings that it had from the prior year. And at, uh, Modesto Junior College, as well as Central Services, which was the firewall project, uh, we're allocating that they will fully expend those dollars. At Columbia, they've been on a path of spending approximately one-third of their savings. So those are significant one-time expenses for the twenty-two, twenty-three year. And then down in row twenty, uh, at the tentative budget, we had conversation of some uh, emergency projects, dollars that needed to be moved aside to Fund Forty-One to fund some of our uh, immediate needs, deferred meetings that might not have been funded elsewhere. So again, if we started with about a hundred and forty million in revenue and here we see a hundred and fifty-eight million in expenses. And what that creates is a change in, uh, fund balance of negative eighteen million for the twenty-two, twenty-three year, ending up with a fund balance of about twenty-one point three million dollars. So in summary, because of large one-time expenditures, ending fund balances below the recommended two months of expenses, uh, something that we've been talking about as it relates to board policy sixty-three oh five. Again, we are doing this one-time in nature. It's not an ongoing impact to our ongoing revenues. We do expect continued efficiencies and savings at all sites in the twenty-two, twenty-three year. So if I go back a slide and we say, oh, fund balance is going to go down eighteen million dollars, I can almost assuredly guarantee you that it will not go down by eighteen million because there will be savings at the sites. Um, this budget includes several fiscally conservative features in this budget, including that high deficit rate factor that I pointed out. Um, and there are several one-time expenditures that will allow us to be able to, um, adjust to any changes that come our way from the state. The ongoing budget is balanced with amounts available for allocation in future years. So as we allocate it out in the current year, some, uh, dollars to MJC for full-time faculty hiring. We know that that still does not get us to the FON. And so we already have to have conversations for the twenty-three, twenty-four year as it relates to what sort of allocations do the sites need to carry out the, um, instruction that we're asking them to do. And so again, this was a quick recap because we had that earlier board study session on the budget. And if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Any questions? I would just add that, that the, um, as you recall in our prior, uh, the prior meeting, uh, the ten million dollars for, for, uh, maintenance. Um, that was at the request of our, of our, uh, facilities director to, to allocate those funds. But we, we wanted to, uh, specifically state that the majority of those funds is going to be tied to, um, at all possible tied to deferred maintenance projects that would fall under the state's block grant under the current state budget. So we can get, you know, recapture some, some revenue. As you know, our, our facility director and her team put together a, a, a critical needs list, basically of, of district-wide deferred maintenance that, you know, has kind of been put on the back burner for too long and we now really need to address it. And, uh, some of those funds will qualify for deferred maintenance under the state's one-time block grant in the current budget. And then obviously, we've, we've dedicated, uh, monies to some other projects. But I know Judy and Yolanda and the whole team have a list already of shovel-ready projects that are going to fit into those, into those buckets, those categories. So we should be able to see some recapture through the state's block grant on, on some of those funds. So I just wanted to add that. And we had that discussion at the finance committee and I, and trustee Dr. Milton Richards has his hand raised.
Yes, um, I'm very pleased with what you've done with the budget. We seem to be very, uh, fiscally prudent and efficient. I, I got a few calls this week that I don't usually get, and apparently there's some physical challenges with our, our daycare center or child development center that could use some funding. So I'd ask that maybe Trevor and Judy, uh, you take a look at that and see if there may be some funds that we can put towards that to make, make that daycare center, uh, uh, more, more safer and better because, you know, obviously our employees need a place for their children to be, uh, watched during the day.
Oh, maybe, um, Judy, just you and your team reach out and see what, any specific concerns that they have that, you know, need to be addressed. What you're good at, how's that? You and your team are good at, I should say. So the required action is that we conduct a public hearing regarding the twenty-two, twenty-three final budget for the Yosemite Community College District and adopt the twenty-two, uh, twenty-three final budget as attached to the September fourteenth, twenty-twenty-two agenda and authorize staff to prepare and and file the necessary, uh, uh, annual financial budget report uh, with the required agencies. So with that, I'll open up the public hearing and see if, uh, anyone wants to speak on, on the twenty-two, twenty-three budget. Okay. We'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the board for the recommended action.
I move the recommendation.
Second.
That's, that's okay. We're going to give you the second, Dr. Milton Richards. I'm not going to leave you out. So we have a first by, uh, trustee Balkan and a second by, uh, trustee Dr. Milton Richards. Uh, roll call vote, please.
Trustee Aguilar? Yes, okay, thank you. Sorry. Trustee Balkan?
Yes.
Trustee Hinton?
Yes.
Trustee Richards?
Yes.
Trustee Nicolau?
Yes.
And Chair Garrett? And Chair Garrett?
Yes.
The vote is six in favor, one not present. Motion carries.
Move on now to item 8.2, Special Appointment to the VIP GPA Board of Directors. I made reference to this group before. So this is our pooled insurance group, and this is a routine and customary action item. And the recommended action is that the board trustees appoint Mr. Trevor Stewart to the management-level employee position and, and our risk management director Dorothy Pimentel to the alternate director position for a two-year term beginning October 1, 2022 and expiring on September 30, 2024. And these are positions that they currently occupy. So with that recommended action, is there a motion?
I'm moved.
Moved by trustee Nancy Hinton. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Jenny Nicolau. Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Aguilar. Trustee Balkan?
Yes.
Trustee Hinton?
Yes.
Trustee Richards?
Yes.
Judy Nicolau?
Yes.
And Chair Garrett?
Yes.
The vote is six in favor, one not present. Motion carries.
And we'll move on now to item 8.3, Personnel Negotiations, Yosemite Community College District and classified, or Classified School Employees Associates, Chapter 420, tentative agreement, the action item. And you all should have received a copy of the tentative MOU or tentative agreement that the board trustees approves, the 2022-2023 tentative agreement regarding, and I'm going to add health benefits between the Yosemite Community College District, YCCD, and California School Employees Association, Chapter 420, CSCE, pending successful completion of the CCA's ratification process attached to the September 14, 2022 agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
By trustee Dr. Milton Richards, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Nancy Hinton. Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Aguilar. Trustee Balkan?
Yes.
Trustee Hinton?
Yes.
Trustee Richards?
Yes.
Trustee Nicolau?
Yes.
Chair Garrett?
Yes.
Vote is six in favor, one not present. Motion carries.
Move on now to item 8.4, Annual Board Self-Evaluation 2022. The recommended action is that the board trustees review the board's self-evaluation results attached to the September 14, 2022 agenda and assess their performance.
I'll chime in. I, I'm so happy everyone was able to participate. You know, we had seven, all seven participated in this survey. And I'm really pleased or gratified that, I don't know what the right word is, but that we, we're not all in agreement because each of us are individuals and we've all, you know, served in different capacities and at different times and different lengths of service. And there's a, there's a lot to celebrate here and there's a, there's a lot of growth that, that we can identify. So it makes for just a really good survey, I think, when, when the responses are somewhat diversified. So I know that from this document, we work on our goals and we have some really good information to work with.
Anyone else? I would agree with that. I, I think this, this survey that we took represents that, that we all have varying views and, and look at ourselves through, through a little different lens. And there is, there is some growth potential, which I think is very healthy. And I, I think it affords us the opportunity to get feedback from others on how well we're, we're, we're doing as a board and, and from a total perspective. And I think we need to, to take this to heart and look at those areas of growth and, and work on those, those areas of growth. But for me, as, as chair, I think this is a great team of people. And I think we all understand our duties and responsibilities and take them to heart and, and working on behalf of, of everyone. So that kind of encapsulate everything. I'm getting nods of approval, so I guess I've said the right thing. So that's all we have to do, right, Graciela?
That is all.
Moving on now to item 8.5, the YCCD Board of Trustees Legal Counsel. The recommended action is that the board of trustees discuss the proposal to change the current model used to secure legal representation on the district matters and receives the ad hoc committee's draft request for proposals, RFP, for legal counsel and determines next step. And I'm going to turn this over to that ad hoc committee chair, trustee Dr. Milton Richards.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. So the subcommittee consisting of Antonio Aguilar, Nancy Hinton, and myself met with staff Dorothy, Henry, Graciela, and Kim. And we're very fortunate that, that we were able to find a, a request for proposal from another college that kind of, kind of, a system that kind of mirrored what we wanted to do. So what you have is a document that we believe should go out for bid, should be approved, that will basically reevaluate, bring on an attorney that will not only represent the board, but will also represent trustees. The attorney would attend meetings, board meetings. The attorney would also review all of our processes and procedures. As I said earlier, when I started this process, I, I think we, we need to be a little bit better in how we handle our investigations and being more consistent in, in doing that. And I, and I think this model will accomplish that. So with that, I would ask my fellow trustee committee members if they have anything else to add. And then I would recommend that we approve this.
No, I just recommend, like trustee Richard said, that we approve this and move on and look, start looking for bids.
The action tonight would be approve, Graciela would be to approve the RFP as presented by the committee on, on the agenda tonight. And that would be the next step. So we need a motion to approve the.
I'll second it.
So that would be the, just want to clarify, right, Graciela?
So I have here, I'll just make a new motion here, that the board of trustees approve the RFP and begin the process.
Correct.
Okay. There, there was.
So we had a motion by trustee Antonio Aguilar, seconded by trustee Nancy Hinton. Any further comments, discussion, questions? Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Aguilar. Trustee Balkan?
Yes.
Trustee Hinton?
Yes.
Trustee Richards?
Yes.
Judy Nicolau?
Yes.
And Chair Garrett?
Yes.
The vote is six in favor, one not present. Motion carries.
Item 8.6, YCCD Resolution 22-23.06, Continuing Board of Trustees Authority to Hold Virtual Meetings Pursuant to AB 361.
Move, approve.
Routine customary, I need to get a few things out before we move. I am fast, but I don't want to be that fast out of respect for everyone. So there you go. So we've had a motion. We've had, I'll abandon ship here in a minute and, and you can sail into the, into the Titanic, into the iceberg. So we've had a, a motion to approve by trustee Dr. Milton Richards and seconded by trustee Antonio Aguilar. Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Aguilar.
Yes.
Trustee Balkan?
No.
Trustee Hinton?
Yes.
Trustee Richards?
Yes.
Judy Nicolau?
Yes.
Trustee, or Chair Garrett, pardon me.
No.
The vote is four in favor, two opposed, one not present. Motion carries.
9.1, which is Request for Future Board Agenda Item.
Chair Garrett, I just want to reiterate, trustee begs request for a technology report. And maybe the chancellor can discuss with her what it is that she would like in that report.
Anyone else? It's been a while. I want to go back to one of our presenters, Elsie King. She represents young adults fighting against, fighting tobacco coalition. It's been some time since we've gotten a report on what other community colleges are doing in this respect. And, you know, as I recall, this issue came up at one time because of, you know, the fire conditions and, and some things that were going on up at Columbia College with infrastructure. And it was interesting at the time that we, we wanted to continue to allow people the ability to smoke when I, I seem to recall it had something to do with gas lines or something like that up at, up at the college. So I found that discussion quite, quite interesting. And, and I find it interesting that we have a high fire danger up there and, and it's such a beautiful environment. It hasn't happened yet, but you never know. So my request is, is to bring it back. I want to see what our peer universe is doing and, and have a discussion and see where we stand currently. So. Anybody else? Okay. We'll move on now to comments from the board of trustees and we'll start first with our student trustee.
I'll try to not speed because I tend to speed a lot. I am glad to hear that Welcome Week along with Go Columbus Days were successful, having surpassed the expected students in, in attendance to the campus. I'm very happy to also hear that we promoted the program services and the clubs that we have on campuses. One last thing, I want to thank all the staff members, classified professionals, and faculty for their services that they do for our students, especially since I'm one. I appreciate all the things that you guys do and that's pretty much it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Trustee Hinton?
Thank you, Chair Garrett. I just want to say thank you for everyone who attended and shared what was on your heart. We do appreciate it. We do take it at heart and listen to what you have to say. Thirty-plus years ago, I was a union steward at the county hospital. So I know the joys of being, you know, at the union, trying to listen to your constituents and taking their needs at heart. So I appreciate what you say, classified professional staff. I appreciate you. I know that you guys work hard. We see you around and that's all I want to say, but I, we appreciate you guys.
Trustee Aguilar?
I just want to thank Dimitri, the IFI president, for giving me a little bit of, of your time and thank all your counselors and I appreciate all the work you guys do with our students. It's, it was an eye-opening experience and thank you for all you guys do.
Trustee Dr. Milton Richards?
I want to thank the chancellor and both campus presidents for, for the extra effort on the student recruitment. I think we're doing well there. And I also want to thank all the classified employees for showing up tonight. And I want you to know that we value a lot. If for some reason we're not able to meet the salary requirements you're asking for, doesn't mean we don't, we don't care a lot about you and value what you're doing. Thank you.
Trustee Nicolau?
It was a great energy. There was great passion today. There was great speakers. And, and I just want to say thank you on a personal level for what classified and all the organizations and staff helped to do. But a couple times I had tears in my eyes. I hear you. I see you. I appreciate you. I also wanted to call out Chelsea who left. I had such good intentions to help clean up the campus and make my children clean up the campus, but we had a bake sale. So even though she's not here, I'd like to pass on that. I really hope that the Young Adults Fighting Tobacco continue to clean up the campus, continue to invite the trustees, make me come to this. I'm very proud of our campuses. I'm proud of the work that happens outside of the hours that everyone helps to put in. Thank you all for a great meeting.
Trustee Balkan?
I wanted to also acknowledge the people in the audience tonight and the speakers. Thirty-nine years ago, I started a career in education and I started as a classified professional. And I, I think it was the best preparation I could have ever began with to then go on to become a certificated professional. But I, I thought tonight, your, your, your passion and your reminders about the, the foundational work that you do, it, I know. I mean, I remember. And it was so beautifully articulated tonight. And, and then the applause for Amy and championing, you know, what you stand for, that was just really, really beautiful. And, and yes, I see you. Yes, I love you. Yes, I appreciate you. And thank you for, for staying tonight and, 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 and listening to the work we do because listening to you really, really was moving, very wonderful, very proud, very impressed. I want to also welcome Caitlin Gross, our Associated Student President for MJC and her interest in wanting to be a high school teacher. I'd love to talk to her about that. I also want to acknowledge the incredible progress, as Dr. Milton Richards already said, that the college presidents presented tonight in terms of enrollment. You know, one of the major goals that the board has had for the chancellor is to focus his energies on, on enrollment. And to hear the presidents having achieved such an, with their staff, such incredible strides and the passion with which you described it tonight was, was, was really terrific. And then lastly, I, I noticed for the first time, and maybe it's just me, as I look up on the screen, I don't remember there being closed caption. Did that just happen this time for the first time? Okay, so yeah, that's fabulous. So thank you for making that technology possible for a number of people who require it. I mean, I still watch movies and, and, and I can hear, but I need to read it sometimes to understand what they're saying. So thank you for a fabulous meeting.
And I want to thank everybody for being here as well. As you know, we usually just get a few people, but it's nice to see the participation here in the next room, out, out, outside and the applause and everything. And like others have said, the, the energy and everything. So I, I want to acknowledge and appreciate that. So with that, the next meeting of the board of trustees is on April, or sorry, April, October 12th, the, October 12, 2022, closed session will begin at 3, open session at 5:30. And we will be in Columbia, remember that. So with that, this meeting stands adjourned. Thank you. Huh? Oh, yeah? Can't go back now.[1784.11]